All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 9th, 2024. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flags. Please stand.
Shall we pray? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to come here and take care of the business of the community. We ask you to give us patience, understanding, ask you to give us wisdom and righteousness as we make these decisions. We thank you for this great country that we live in and may it continue being a good country and a righteous country. In Christ's name we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and individual. This morning, we have Commissioners Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from March 26, 2024, regular session. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take actions on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on future agenda or addressed by some other course of action. Mark White, lucky number one.
I have noticed there is an inconsistency in the Commissioners' Court since Commissioner Harrison has now joined the ranks of the bearded. So Judge Stovall, you're the only one holding out right now. I just want to let you know. Good morning, your honor and distinguished Commissioners. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Friends of Merritt and those residents of Merritt, Texas. Teddy Roosevelt said, "Knowing what's right doesn't mean much if you don't do what's right." Well, the Friends of Merritt are trying to do what's right by trying to protect our community against massive overreach and massive growth. The Merritt incorporation efforts are moving right along. There's many, many naysayers, but most of those are outside of Merritt, either from Farmersville or have associated ties to Farmersville. But the majority of the people are willing to move forward and have worked diligently to get things in order to make that happen. We are very, very close to having our updated petition ready to submit, so I just want to thank you guys again for all the support and help, direction, guidance, counsel, et cetera, on how to make that correct and perfect this time around. So thank you again. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mark. Jason Krug.
Good morning, Commissioners. Stovall. David, I'd like to thank you for coming out a couple of weeks ago and seeing firsthand our community and speaking with some of the residents that haven't been able to be vocal here today. We do have four of the six homes joining us today from my side of the street. I know I've been the only one vocal to this point, but we all share the same frustrations of the handling of the water and the idea that we had a plan, a couple of plans a few years back, to alleviate these problems and try to get this water out of our community. The county stepped in, which put halt to all of the plans that we had had to correct it, and it's been moving at a very slow idle ever since. The water and the cars being dirty, that's the straw that broke the camel's back. I've called this court for many a years, three and four years, about gray water, about the flooding, about the streets getting damaged, about future problems, about the water being pumped to these ditches, and the ditches can't hold the water as it goes downhill. Once you get past the dead end to the county where it turns to a dirt farm road, the creek is full. The water doesn't go beyond the tree line. It floods from there back toward the last tree. So all this water is being diverted downhill, and nothing's happening. So we have more problems than just some pumping and some flooding to the street that I don't like, that annoys me. We have problems with the drainage going down the road to the ditches. There's no need for anyone to vote or anything. We have county equipment that could go out and immediately start working on ditches and drainage that is already the county's responsibility. So while we delay the decision on what's to be done in Harvest Bend, there's work that can be had right now to help alleviate the water from the community by cleaning the ditch and concerning ourselves with the culverts. The streets are built up on both sides of the aprons to the county road, so the water does not shed from the street itself. It holds in the apron of the road, so now we're not even getting water into the ditches. So our biggest argument is that there's things that we could be doing while we're delaying the decision of what ultimately is the end goal. I understand that you have a plan in place, you've said that for two years, right? We want immediate assistance to start getting the water in these ditches that you already maintain as a county. These ditches can move water back to the trees and onto their final resting place if they're dug out, and that's where we're looking for some attention immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Roy or Ray?
Correct.
Ray Lambert, come forward.
Good morning. Again, I'm just seconding everything Jason said, basically. You know, I've been a homeowner there, original owner, for nine years. We've had these water issues from day one. They have just kind of compiled. Everybody keeps voicing concern. There's a lot of talk about, you know, people looking into it, studying it, doing something with it, but nothing's ever happened. We did come together with the community and come up with a few plans to start putting in place, and then it seems like every time we get ready to pull that trigger and go ahead and make something happen, that somebody from the county says, "Okay, we're going to do this now. We are going to look into it." So then that halts everybody because, of course, no one wants to come out of pocket money to fix something that ultimately should have already been taken care of. So again, I'm just here to also second that motion. You know, we just, we really need to get either a say in what's going to happen, either get the ball rolling, or, you know, if the county's not going to do anything, they need to just be upfront with everybody, say, "We're not going to handle this," so we can get these homeowners together and make something happen ourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Samuel Shawty? Couldn't tell if there was an L in there.
October 28th, or, yeah, October 28th, 2020, this court voted to fund a project for the volunteer fire departments with some of the CARES Act money. That money, that equipment, it was supposed to be one Lucas device and five SCBA per department. We never saw a piece of that equipment to this day. We're here today talking about wanting to talk to y'all about helping adding us in to the radio systems, and my understanding is that there is ARPA money there that could be used for this, and that I feel like that's the least y'all can do. Y'all got y'all's, and I realize some of y'all were not on the court when this took place, but y'all got y'all's headline, and none of that funding, none of that money ever made it to the fire departments. So I feel like the least y'all can do is consider adding us in on this radio system while the discounts are still there and all of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. We will be having discussions about this in, I think, item number four, so we'll answer some of those questions at that time, hopefully. Anybody else wish to speak? Being done, I'll close the public testimony. Old business, action item, the preliminary plat of Greenstead Estates in addition in precinct one. Ryan, you'll brief us.
This one was on the agenda for last meeting. We had some questions because the road in front of it's on the thoroughfare plan, and it requires a little bit more right-of-way dedication than what was originally on the preliminary plat. They've gone through and addressed that. They're now giving a 50-foot right-of-way dedication for that road that's on the thoroughfare plan, and this is just the preliminary. There's still going to be construction plans and a final plat on down the road, so.
All right, any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business, consent calendar. Commissioners, you have the consent calendar. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of accounts payable.
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Do what now? Oh, okay. Yes, right. Let's pull item four out and vote on it separately. So I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar, removing four, and then we'll talk about it after we vote.
So moved.
Second. May I ask a question in reference to it?
They requested us to change it. The department did.
Yes. Wrong date, Saturday?
No. No, it's the difference in vehicles. It has to do with Ford Explorer and a Tahoe, and now they're deciding that's not what they want.
Okay.
All right, we got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, on number four, the juvenile probation office had originally requested and chose a 2024 Ford Explorer XLT four-door and a 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe LS four-door four-by-two. After they've really looked at it a little bit longer over the weekend, they came in yesterday and decided the Tahoe wasn't the better vehicle for them, and that they were going to pull it from here, and then they're looking, working with them again, maybe to find another Explorer. But there was only one Explorer, I guess, available at the time they were trying to receive that vehicle, so I'd entertain a motion to approve item four under the consent, removing the 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe from the request.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action items, approval accounts payable?
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, on the payroll and personnel, I'm going to pull personnel out. The DA and county attorney are both going to be here requesting some position and some funding that's in the package with personnel, and I want to make sure if we're paying for those, some of those monies out of the Senate Bill 22 or Fund 10. So I want to discuss that on a separate, when we get to their item, which is number six, I believe. So I'd entertain a motion for approval of payroll at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and we'll move personnel to after item six. All right. Action item number one, a proclamation of fentanyl poisoning awareness on April 14th. Is Mitzi here? She not here? Commissioners, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Cheyenne Little's life was tragically taken April 14th, 2021, her death is the first publicly acknowledged fentanyl poisoning death in Hunt County. Whereas in order to honor their daughter's legacy, Cheyenne's family has created WeAre3FP.org, fiercely fighting fentanyl poisoning to bring awareness to the deadly effects of fentanyl poisoning. Whereas opening the eyes of our community to this deadly drug may prevent one death in hopes of keeping parents and loved ones from experiencing the same grief and pain, then Cheyenne's death will not be in vain. And whereas we encourage all citizens to help spread the message that fentanyl poisoning is coming after our children, and it is up to us to do our due diligence to expose its lethal dangers. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners' Court of Hunt County, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 14th, 2024, is Fentanyl Poisoning Awareness Day. Commissioners, I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Action item two, Commissioners, we're going to bring that up at the next meeting. We got the wrong month report on the agenda, so we'll repost it for next month. So that's pulled. Action item three, the quarterly report for the City of Commerce Animal Shelter.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number four, the discussion of radio project and dispatch upgrade equipment and furniture. Buddy or Virginia or both, however you all want to.
Buddy Oxford, Chief Deputy Sheriff's Office, introducing Virginia Phillips. She's the communications supervisor at this time. We proposed a packet of items that we feel like the sheriff's office needs to get started and completed in preparation for the new radio system, and Virginia has put extensive work into putting a proposal together. At this time, I'm going to let her take the microphone.
Thank you, Buddy. We'd rather listen to her anyway.
I don't know. I've got a lot of pages here.
I know you do.
All right. Good morning. As Buddy said, my name's Virginia. I'm the communications supervisor right now over dispatch, and about a year ago, it was brought to our attention that with all the different changes with the radio system and the potential of fire coming on as part of our dispatch center, that we needed to make some changes and upgrades to be able to accommodate that if and when that occurs. So we put together this project to take those proactive measures for that. If you've ever been involved in moving a dispatch center or upgrading it, there's a lot of moving parts to it, so I apologize in advance, but bear with me here. All right, so in your packet here, I've got the different action items. I'm proposing that we have an immediate departmental restructure to reflect a communications director, a dispatch supervisor, an assistant tack, and nine dispatchers. All this is doing is adding the dispatch, or I'm sorry, the communications director position at this time that will free me up to be able to take care of this radio project that's very extensive and to take care of the CAD integrations that we're going to need to be able to bring fire into dispatch if that's something that we need to take care of.
Explain to the public what a CAD system is.
So CAD is computer-aided dispatch. It's what dispatchers use when we get a call that comes in through 911 or through an admin line. We put it into the computer. It will populate it, tell us whose jurisdiction it's in, if it's a city, or if it's the county call, or if it goes to DPS, et cetera. We put that in there. It tells us what priority, how many officers we need to send, where they're going. It'll show our officers on a map, so if anybody moved to go code B or have a problem, "Help me, emergency," we will know where they're at. So that's a very important tool that dispatchers use, and if it's not accurately put together, it just really hurts dispatch and how we're able to do our job. And right now, our CAD system is less than. Our GIS stuff on it is not accurate. It's not up to date. All the new housing additions are not in it, and there's several issues with our CAD system. So that's also part of this, is updating our CAD system from Tyler Public Safety to Tyler Enterprise. Do you have a question?
I was thinking of Tyler. Haven't we had issues with them in the past?
Yes.
With different software packages?
Different aspect.
Not all their packages. A lot of their packages are great. Some of them not so good.
So we basically have the stepchild of their computer software, where they have a new updated one. It's Enterprise. They bought from New World several years ago, a different company. They took their software and they updated it, and it's got ArcGIS in it, and it's just very sophisticated compared to what we currently have, where we can add different map layers and we can add different, like, fire districts and things like that into it.
Have we talked to other counties that have brought this along with it? Have we talked? They have this in other counties, correct?
Yes, sir. So we, Brandon and I went to, Brandon over IT, and I went over to Rockwall County over the summer and talked with them. They have it. They have it integrated across all the counties, or all the cities in Rockwall County that they dispatch for, and Rockwall City also uses it as well.
How long have they had it?
They've had it just a little over, I guess probably about two years now. So we sat down with them and went through it, and they showed us how all the different things work. It gives turn-by-turn directions when you dispatch somebody. If I put a unit on the call, it'll give turn-by-turn directions in the car versus the deputy having to look at a map or listen to the dispatcher trying to give directions over the radio. It gives them turn-by-turn directions. And the GIS in it has done way different than what we're currently doing on ours. It's updated quarterly. All these new additions and stuff that go in, like, they're not in our current CAD. So like, all those new housing additions, for example, in cattle mills, we get all those. We put it in our CAD system. It doesn't validate the address, so we can't see it on the map.
Well, it's going to eliminate two different setups, too, because your 911 system has up-to-date maps and is updated by the COG, but y'all can't see them on your terminals for the dispatch area. This will be seamless across, that you all have the same information on all of your computer screens, if I understood it correctly.
Yes, sir. So like, right now, dispatch is set up to where we have a 911 computer that's supplied to us by COG. All our 911 calls come in through it, and it will populate various information into that. So like, the address, it'll give us a phone number. If it's a cell phone, it gives us a tower address, but it'll eventually, it'll face, as it triangulates through the towers, it'll face to a specific address, and then we can see it on that map. But the layers of the map, the street addresses and stuff like that are all updated. I think they're updated daily or if not daily, weekly. So we have to turn over here to this computer to take care of stuff over here, and then we have to come back to this computer over here, and then we have a radio computer over here, so it just kind of puts it all together for us. And this CAD system also integrates with the radio project to where if, for example, Buddy were to get into a foot pursuit and have his handheld radio on him, I know. It's funny.
Not a chance that happening.
Anyways, we'll be able to see him as opposed, we'll be able to see that handheld radio going across our map. Right now, it's just in their car. So if he gets out in a foot pursuit and we lose him somehow, or, you know, he's not getting out or anything like that on the radio, he's unable to communicate with us, we can see him on the map with his radio. So this CAD system does integrate with the L3 radios. Rockwall also has the L3 radio system as well, and they've got it integrated in through their CAD, and they had all but good things to say. Very different than what we've said about the public safety.
Just a newer version, a lot newer version.
A lot newer version, more user-friendly, a lot more features.
Okay.
All right.
I understand this right here, that you have given this talk, if I'm not mistaken, also with Harris, in reference to radios and reference to the police departments of Hunt County. Am I correct?
The CAD system, not so much.
Not so much, but the other, yes.
We have talked with all the city PDs that we dispatch for about the radio project. We've let them know a rough estimate on a go-live date, which is sometime between October of this year and January of '25. We should go live with this new radio system.
I noticed this in reference to, I think it was page five of seven. They were talking about all of the above, in which they were talking about constables and everything else, police departments, but on number seven, they also talked in reference to fire department dispatch will be taken over to Hunt County SO, and I'm sure that that will probably needs to be done in actuality. I believe the volunteer fire departments and also the police departments will say that's true, and it needs to be done. A couple of weeks ago, basically, I had some chiefs and also some fire department personnel call me and say that they had a problem in reference to this, and very much so, basically concerned about funding and additional radios and all this, in reference to it because of such bad coverage. And we've been working on L3, in which I think it's a good deal, and I think we're making a very, our decision has made very good in reference to communication with L3. But after hearing some of the stories and reference to what was going on, in reference to safety, as far as accidents, as far as boating things and everything else, we do need to reconstruct this whole thing as far as bringing back the, and actually bringing back dispatchers to Hunt County itself. We did this many a years ago, basically, and we're paying for a position over there at Farmers Branch in reference to it, and this was decided a long time ago, and this was with the blessings of everybody on the court at that time. But evidently, as we grow, we need something else, but we also need somebody that is familiar with our county as far as where everything is, and there's been a delay, and I've been receiving a bunch of this. In fact, did talk with several fire chiefs and also talked, fire chiefs and also police departments, even Quillan ISD, and they were concerned about whether they were getting this funding. Now, we have funding as far as OP, in which I believe we're going to discuss this later, but I am concerned about it also in actuality, and if I'm not mistaken, this relates to, I believe we'll find out later. So what I did, in which I have a right to under the Constitution, basically, on April the ninth, pardon me, April the third, or April the ninth, I put an agenda request, and this agenda request considered impossible take action on providing American Rescue Plan Act funding the volunteer fire departments and county police departments for inclusion of the radio project. And I did take this to the judge and ordered to submit it for today, and since then, we've come up with these other two items in reference to this. I do have a problem in which, you know, Facebook is truly a weapon. So I have a Victoria Snap wants to talk to you about why tax money are not supporting or why the county is not supporting the volunteer fire departments and what, you know, why calls are being routed out of the county, and that was a decision made a lot a long time ago in reference to it, and now we're trying to correct it, especially since we've had all these complaints. I understand this. I want to point out that, hey, the Commissioners' Court has funded. They have funded the Dead Gun Volunteer Fire Departments, and we wish we could do better. In fact, I've led that charge all this time. We pay them $4,800 a month, and I think that that's, needs to be increased, there's no doubt about it. You multiply that times 12, times 13, that's $748,800. Plus, we have comp. We've had a lot of fire departments hurt, as far as men, injuries, Campbell, Danny Cash and all that, and we've stepped up in reference to have y'all covered, and this is very important because you deserve the coverage. It's dangerous work, with no doubt about it. But also, in reference to this dispatch thing, basically, we pay for that a position over there. If I'm not mistaken, they're asking for, you know, continuation, more dispatchers, and yes, I consider they're needed. There's no doubt about it. But I want to tell you something. I have volunteer fire departments, and I have, and that's in my area, and also the whole county has them, that can't afford these radios. We have police departments that cannot afford these radios, and we're going to talk later on this morning in reference to whether these items even qualify.
That's not, no, that's not.
As to my knowledge, I think they do as far as assisting.
That's not true, Philip. We're not going to be talking about that. We have Grant Works here to make a presentation to us today to tell us what they can do, and by next meeting, hopefully, we can engage them where they can give us that advice. But no, we won't have any actual.
I was just going by this right here and advised in the same. I was just going by this right here and advised in the same thing you did in reference to that. That's true. Now, I was surprised basically that this put on the agenda was not put on there.
Philip, that's exactly what we're talking about right now.
Because.
Philip, this is the agenda, the item that we're talking about. And we're talking, we're going to be talking about everything you requested.
Well.
I put, I didn't put your language in there, but this is on it. This was supposed to have been on last meeting in Virginia. Had to go to training and didn't have time to get the presentation ready. And so she asked if she could move it to this time. So this, this agenda item is the same as what you've asked for.
All this stuff right here besides the front part of it basically came at a later date. What I'm saying is this right here. We need to work with each other in reference to this. But I was very disturbed basically that I had people calling me, y'all don't give nothing to them? That's not true. That is not true.
In the report that Virginia's trying to get through here, she has been working with fire departments. She has done presentations with them. They know as well that it's more complex than just putting them on the system.
I agree.
And plus that is their channel as well. But if we, when we put them on the system, we've also got to talk about what are we going to do about the ambulance service? Since they use the same channel as the fire departments do. So that's why Virginia has been working on this to put it together, to do a presentation. And that's what she's trying to do right now.
And I bet what you put and I appreciate because you are going in as far as in depth and considering it. But as later we'll be talking about, and hopefully in open session, we'll be talking about some of the ideas in reference to that. And I believe that this right here had to do, some of this had to do with basically buying the $45 deal and all that goes away January. Am I correct?
It goes after the system's been accepted. So it's, it's on final acceptance of the system. I can't say that it's January. I mean, we may go live.
I'm talking about L3 saying that that 45% is gone after.
Right, that's on final acceptance of the system.
There's not a time limit on it. It's when we accept the system. So we've got time. That's what we've been working on. That's what Virginia's been working hard on. It's, you know, this court, when we voted, let's back up and give the history. You know, the city of Greenville was trying to put in a new radio system. They'd asked us to participate years before. We don't even know how long before. At the last minute, they were fixing to approve it and we found out about it and was asked to come talk. And we tried to get with them to put in the same system. That did not work out. But to get the, the pricing that we got, the city of Greenville's going to pay right at $11 million for their radio system over 10 years. Our contract with L3 is right at $4 million. And we know we had this, we're going to spend another million or two before we found out about our dispatch being so far behind. So it's going to cost us some money. Greenville's not even putting in a dispatch system. So, but we said from day one, when we, if we went with the P25 system, we were advised by law enforcement and others that they wouldn't be able to communicate. And we said from early on, we'd have to support it. We may have to buy radios. We may have to figure out a way to get them radios. But we took that responsibility on at the very end, the very first of it. So we're not, we haven't backed away from that. We haven't had any. This is a very, very complicated situation. AMR, we had, I never heard a complaint about, until about two years ago about the dispatch from AMR. It may have been going on before, I just wasn't made aware of it. So we started looking into it because we couldn't dispatch. We didn't have the equipment. We got our consultant with, that's working with L3 and us and had them evaluate the current system to see if we had to go take over the dispatch of fire departments, that we could do it. And he said that he gave us a plan and I think it was $80,000, Steve.
I know the fire departments were involved in.
Fire department's talking about it. I mean, it's going to cost us 68, 60 to $80,000. And we were, we're getting prepared so if something happened, we could move in a hurry. But it made more sense to try to make all this happen at the same time. And we're still working on the plan and we don't have necessarily the final picture. We know what we'd like it to be, but we don't know what it's going to be. We still got a lot of things to figure out and we're working on it diligently. And the discount won't go away till probably next year sometime.
We don't even have towers up yet.
We don't have towers up. We don't have the buildings out there. We don't have internet service to the towers. We got, there's a lot of work going on all at the same time. We, we've now been focusing on dispatch. So let's let Virginia give her a report and then if we want to discuss this more, we can.
All right. So like Judge said, we have been doing this for quite some time. I think we started probably back in September of '23. Started with Trot Group and we did do that evaluation, that cost analysis and everything else. And so I kind of built my project around that. Again, we'll need the additional positions there in dispatch. If and when we take over fire department, then I'm proposing we add three dispatch positions to that at a later date. So the other thing in here that I've got on line number two is to approve the purchase of new dispatch furniture. I've included the quote there. What this does is it expands our dispatch to be able to add more space in there for additional dispatchers with our call load. We take over 40,000 calls a year. And I believe last time I talked to one of the fire departments, they told me that they're projected to hit 30,000 calls. So if we take over fire, we're basically doubling what we're doing. So right now I have two dispatchers that work at a time and sometimes I need three. I just don't always have the staffing for that. I don't know if you guys are aware of the turnover in dispatch that we have, but it is pretty high. And right now, knock on wood, this is the first time since I've been employed in Hunt County that I have been fully staffed. So that's awesome. So in here I've got the furniture cost in here. This is adding, let's see, it's adding two additional consoles to what we already have in the dispatch center. And it's updating it to where it's, like right now, everything in the room bounces, the sound bounces. So if my partner's sitting next to me taking a 911 call and she has to get loud, I can't hear the radio next to me or my caller over here because of the way the sound bounces in the room. So this furniture kind of does help absorb some of that sound. It's built for dispatch centers for that reason. It's, you know, it's got all the ergonomical features and everything else, stand up desk and things like that. Our dispatchers work 12 hour shifts, sometimes 16 if people don't, if people call in. I've worked many 16 hour shifts. Sometimes you can't sit there the whole time. I did get with maintenance to find out what their cost would be to add additional power throughout the room and replace the carpet in there because we'll run everything through the floor. That came out to $21,000. Now that's, that is a high quote because I gave them very little time to get that back to me. And he was awesome and got that taken care of. Thank you, Chris. So that is a high quote. It is on the high end. It could be cheaper than that. And then I also got with IT who gave me a quote as well on what it would take for theirs. And his came out again, they gave me high quotes because I didn't really give them a long time to research their side. And he came out to $12,500 to add additional cabling and stuff like that. The furniture on here came out $175, $730 to add those positions in there. Any questions on furniture? On number three, I've got moved forward with the purchase of the new CAD and RMS system. Again, this is another project we've been working on for several months. We've had them come in and do various demos and things like that on their different, oh, what are they called? Like the different programs, because there's different ones, modules. They have different modules. So they've come in and we've taken some off that we aren't going to use. And we've added some that we thought would be beneficial for our dispatch with or without fire. So the rest of these are all going to be radio related. Do you want to go over them now or you want to wait for radios?
Let's go over, we'll be fine.
All right. So I've got number four on here to discuss a game plan for ordering radios for Hunt County departments. So we've got, I'll be programming all these radios. And, excuse me. So we've got several departments, constables, homeland security, the DA and CA investigators. They all carry radios. Trying to figure out what we're going to do for our departments. Are we going to order them at the sheriff's office so that I can get them programmed and everything and then divvy them out? Do I budget for that? Or do each of those individual departments need to budget for those radios for them? I did put in here that if we wait until October with the new fiscal year, if we wait until then to order those. When you order them, you've got several weeks for shipping. And then you've got install on, on the in-car radios that can take, it just depends on how long. Because we have to get a company out here to install all those. So we could miss our deadline as far as our go live time for some of those. I do have some measures in place to make sure that we're not without emergency communications for those, those offices. So we're not just going to turn off the VHF system and, you know, sink or swim for a couple of months until their, their radios come in. And then I've got on here, what are we going to do with the agencies that are unable to purchase those compatible radios? I've got a couple of different suggestions on here as far as either purchasing a surplus of ours. I've had one police off, or police department reach out and suggest maybe a rent to own program so that they can make monthly payments, that it would be easier for their, their agency to do that versus just the upfront cost of those, those radios. And then another option I had on here was to purchase radios and then just distribute them out. And then charge a minimal usage fee to offset some of those maintenance and purchase costs. This is something that some of the other agencies that I've reached out to. Henderson County, Kaufman County, Rockwall County, Van Zant. I feel like I'm missing one. Anyways, I've reached out to several of them and asked how they manage their radio systems like that. And that's kind of what they do is they buy all the radios and then they do, and it's, it's very minimal. Like me, the average citizen could afford to get my radio. Because I think they issue out X amount of radios. And then anything over that amount, they charge them like $20 a month per radio, something to that extent. I included some MOUs on the back of this presentation for those different agencies that are doing how they do things. So you could take a look at that. As far as the VHF system or the legacy system is, is the terminology there. The legacy system, we're going to leave it up for as long as we can. The problem with maintaining that legacy system and everyone's still operating off of it is it will dumb down the system we're paying $4 million for. It will use up a lot of resources on our system and it will dumb down our radio. We might as well stay on the VHF radio if we're going to continue to do that long term. Short term, it's not, you know, we can make that work short term during the transition. I'm not saying we're cutting the VHF off. The problem with the sys, with maintaining the legacy system is going to be cost. You know, we're paying all these, this money to maintain a new system and trying to move towards it. Last year we spent under $2,000 to maintain the system. As far as maintenance fees go, that I have access to see. Now, if there's something on the, you know, that the county pays that I don't see, I don't know about that. But we paid $2,000 or under $2,000 last year to Inter County to come out and do maintenance on our radio system.
Is it the tower itself that is defective also?
So Lieutenant Gier said that Maltech Radio Company refused to climb it due to its stability. Said it's very unstable. And so if that tower were to become structurally unsound and are we going to, are we the county going to maintain it? Are we going to rebuild it? Is kind of where that falls. Like right now, it's working, you know. But, you know, give it a couple of years and the rust on that thing is.
That's the, that's the tower out by 69, 34 and 24, yeah.
The benefits of maintaining the legacy, legacy system is obviously redundancy. The system we bought is a, basically a computer that does radio things. And as we all know, radios fail, radios or computers fail. Computers have to be updated, things like that and go down for a time. So having that VHF system is, is not a bad redundancy so long as it's standing.
Is it going to be standalone if it's standing by itself? You said it would slow down the other system, but was that meaning because they were tied together or because you'd have to have people going back and forth?
Tied together. If I tie it together and it will take away, it uses additional resources to explain that in a nutshell. It takes additional resources which then ties up additional talk groups to where multiple people are not, as many people are not going to get out as could be, if that makes sense.
So it's not, it couldn't be dependent or independent of the other one. It'd have to be tied to it.
Well, no, 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 no. It can be independent. We can use a VHF system over here and then we can tie it to a talk group. So like our main channel, we could tie it together during the transition.
I was thinking at the last meeting we had, that's what we talked about. It would be independent and, and then you're saying something else. I'm just trying to make sure I understood it.
So you've got multiple options. So you can leave it as independent, which is my suggestion.
Yeah.
And then you can also tie them together, which will tie, what will use up additional resources and dumb down our new system. During the transition, that's what I propose to do only because, until everyone gets on board, you know, with the, within reason. Because you've, just because you've got multiple talk groups and you've got all this, this capability, doesn't mean you've got a dispatcher on the other end that can answer every single one of these talk groups. Our radio system will hold 65,355 talk groups. Doesn't mean our dispatcher can listen to all of them. So to keep, for officer safety reasons, I would tie it together during the transition just so that we can get everybody on it. Because, you know, Quinlan, West Waukegan, all those south agencies, they respond to a lot of the calls that we go on and we respond to a lot of their calls as back, backup units. So to take the ability away for them to talk to each other and dispatch plan telephone back and forth with them is an officer safety issue in my opinion, so.
All right.
Number six on here, I propose that we form a radio committee to make decisions regarding our Hunt County radio network. How we implement our system and what we allow on it will play a big part in how it runs down the road. Just like our CAD system junk in, junk out. If we allow radios on our system that are not Phase Two, it will again, take all those additional resources and it'll drop everything that we're doing down to Phase One, which basically just means that it's not running at, at top, at its best, at its top performance. Again, it's just bogging down our system if we allow those radios on there that don't meet certain requirements. And if you look in those MOUs that I've provided as well, you'll see where other agencies restrict what radios are allowed on their system. And it's not a brand. It's not saying you can only buy L3 Harris or anything like that. It's just these capabilities so that it doesn't bog down our system. So like what securities are we going to keep in place? These are all just different things on here under number six that a committee would make decisions on. When you have however many chiefs across the board for police and, you know, for fire as well, then you've got, like right now, I've got an agency that wants all calls when they're not on duty emailed. I've got another agency that wants all calls taken in their city. He wants us to call and leave a voicemail. He's not going to answer it, but he wants a voicemail so that when he comes back to work, he'll know what happened in the city while he's gone. Stuff like that. So you're going to have all these different agencies coming at you, me, coming at me wanting to accommodate their individual needs. So that's a common thing across with the PDs and stuff like that. And I don't see it being any different for FD, which leads us into number seven, where I think that we need to form a fire committee as well to make those decisions. That way, whenever somebody comes up and says, Fire Station Two wants this, it goes to the committee and it's a board decision. The, the radio committee is something that's done across, I think Henderson County has one. They've had theirs up the longest out of the agencies that I communicate with. And he said that was the best thing they ever did was make the radio committee as far as those decisions go. Because I can make decisions all day long, but maybe they're not the best. So having a committee to make sure that everything is fair across the board as far as what we allow and don't allow on our system is kind of where I think we need to go. And same thing with number seven, that's just talking about building a committee for fire dispatch. Because that's going to add a lot of responsibilities, not just to our dispatchers, but to our supervisors as well in what we, and how we are going to dispatch those. So I come from Greenville. You know, I've, I've started in 2011 dispatching and I'm used to dispatching fire over there, but they have a bat chief, just one. So if I had a problem, I'd call bat chief. That's not something we can do here with 13 different chiefs.
We have, we have some of these police departments that have the radio that we have now and it coincides with this once we change over and you're saying. have now, and it coincides with this, once we change over, and you're saying possibly having their own deal until we can get, having their old frequency or using that. We got a bunch of radios in reference, that I believe it was two years ago, in reference to grants, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, in fact, we still have some of those radios that have not been used, that are still in the box with the Sheriff's Department, correct?
No, sir.
Are they all been used?
They're all issued out. In fact, I've issued out some of the new radios because we don't have enough for all of our officers.
If we swap over to this, keeping this other system until we can move on, will those radios be good to put in the other cars?
No, sir, because those radios are single-banded, so they're banded for VHF.
Unless we keep the old thing, it won't work.
Those are L3 radios, they're 185s. Those are, like I said, single-banded radios to one band. We've asked L3 if we can re-band them, to, you know, reuse them, repurpose, and they've told us no, that they don't do that, so...
Does anybody do that?
I think that's like jailbreaking it, kind of like a cellphone. I don't know how to do that, I don't have that skill set. I have not found anybody that would, that can do that. I'm not saying that they're not out there, though.
Any other questions?
I have one. So questions about funding for the radios, that will impact some of the questions about integration that you're proposing we form these committees to do, because it'll give us an idea of what radios will be on the system.
Yes, sir. So who decides how many radios Wolf City Fire gets and Cattle Mills Fire gets? Who makes that decision? Do you base it off of apparatus? Do you base it off of personnel? Do you base it off of the population? How do you decide how each of those, you know, all of those things are allocated out to each of those agencies? And same thing if the county picks up the other agency, the PD agencies as well, a committee will help decide, make those decisions. Because, you know, we've got some departments, I did a, I did like an inventory of all the different PDs and how many vehicles they have, how many people they have. I've got one agency that has like six cars and maybe has one person working a day, maybe. But they have however many volunteers they have, that come and go throughout the day or, you know, once a week, once a month. Do we give every single one of those volunteers a radio? I'm not saying one way or the other, but that's something that needs to be decided on by a committee and doesn't need to be decided on by one person.
Gotcha. And at some point, the number 1.7 or 1.8 million was, has been brought out as the cost it would take to, the required cost for getting, for purchasing and distributing radios to the fire departments if the county went that route. Do you know where that number came from?
I don't know where that number came from. I'm going to point it at Jeff. Do you know where that number came from?
From, uh, there.
Okay, so it was a quote they got from Harry Maddox, the salesman with L3.
Okay, thank you.
So fire radios are different than PD radios, not all of them, I guess, but they have those, like, what are they, intrinsically safe? Is that the right word? Okay, great. The ones that can go in the fire, like you can hold them in there and still talk on them, they're really cool. But we don't need those, you know? So, correct, law enforcement does not need them. I don't know how much those cost by themselves. I just got a quote for 10 portables for the sheriff's office, and I think it came out somewhere around $50,000.
They have the handheld that uses as automobile with a cradle also when you take it with you and all that, were those cheaper?
So the cradle is cheaper than buying a mobile radio. So an in-car radio is roughly, just off the top of my head, don't quote me, about $5,000, $5,000 to $6,000. And the portable...
Is that, is that with the 45% discount?
Yes, sir. So with the portable radio, you can buy a cradle that works as a charger as well. The problem with that for using it on our day-to-day law enforcement officers is, you know, I get into a foot pursuit, I got to bail out of my car, am I going to remember to grab my radio? Because you have to take it off your duty belt, put it into the cradle for it to work as a mobile radio.
That cradle's not charging at the same time, is it?
It does. It does charge it at the same time. But the county also purchased the extended batteries that should last 12-hour shifts, 12 to 16-hour shifts.
I would like to clarify this, though. The output in reference to that radio would work outside of a car throughout the whole tower, am I correct, tower areas?
It should, in theory. 95% coverage is what they've guaranteed us across the county. That's outdoor coverage. I mean, it's going to be a great system. Right now, I know that, I don't know any of our ISDs that can actually get out on their radios right now, inside their schools. And I know we have so many problems with our current radio system down by the lake and everything else. That's the other negative to maintaining this VHF system is, you know, now we've prioritized half the county's safety by putting them on this system, but now we've got all these over here that are still hit or miss if they're getting out.
I'm very well of the understanding and reference, half the time, you're hoping you can get somebody to answer, basically, even with cell phones, supposedly. I think we need to move on. I would like to be able to look and find out, basically, as far as grants. I know that they've used the ARPA funding in other counties, and I know that a lot of the volunteer fire departments, in reference to some other counties that have used it, basically have looked to make sure that each, you know, the vehicles involved in it, fire trucks and like that, did have one for sure, and basically the rest of them. That would be more questions asked later on, what would be covered and what can be covered. But I think it's very important that we take care, that we not just have the sheriff's office on one radio, but the ability, and I'm talking about for the safety of the officers, fire departments, basically, out there, and for the public that we serve. And I tell you what, we need to step up, and we need to go on and move forward and reference this, and if it's going to take ARPA money, I think that if we can legally do it, which I figure we can, but I would have a problem in them having us use ARPA money to purchase and then rent it out. I don't know whether that can actually be done, but that's for somebody besides me to answer. But I think we need to have the safety of our officers and our firemen and our public when we make these decisions.
That's why, Phillip, that Virginia's proposing to put committees together, so we know what kind of radios each department needs, we know how many they need from each department, and then you can come back with a cost estimate of what it's going to cost. To sit here today and say, yes, we're going to fund it by ARPA money, we don't even know exactly what we're totally funding, is inappropriate. And that's why she's brought this together today, so we can put a committee together of fire departments, of law enforcement, and figure out what everybody needs, so we can help fund if need be.
Well, the way we've looked at it, and everybody else has looked at it, everything is not being considered except the sheriff's office and the county, and it's as if we threw everybody else in the ditch.
Then you've been sleeping during the meetings, then, because that's not been said.
I haven't been sleeping. What I'm saying is, I'm hearing this, this is what the people out there think.
That's because that's one side that's been put out to the public, that's why.
That's right.
Okay, let's open it up to some public comments. Mark, you've got your hand up. You'll have to come to the mic if you're going to ask a question.
So my question relates to expansion and future municipality growth in our community. Obviously, I'm concerned about that, and obviously, the cost, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm really wanting to know how much capacity is going to be coming forward with this new upgrade, and how quickly those new addresses will be updated. Because in our community, 911 calls get routed all over the place, and so you could be on the call for a long time before anybody's even dispatched. So those are kind of my concerns, and that's why I'm asking about future growth, adding new municipalities, and making sure that this, these GIS maps are updated, so, just general questions.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else want to speak? We got it open. Any other comments? Okay, I'll close that part of it. Commissioners, Coach Webb Grant Works coming up, let's see, we may move them up to follow this, so that we can kind of get some comments. I'm not wanting to put them on the spot. They're here just to make a presentation, to kind of tell us what they can do and what they've been doing for others, and then hopefully, we can get with them and get back on the agenda for next time, and engage them and understand what their fee schedules and all will be, but today, we'll just have their presentation. Virginia, is it imperative we vote on ordering some of this equipment today as far as the dispatch, or in two weeks from now, is that, will that be okay?
To answer your question, would it be okay? Because the problem with that is, the problem with waiting on the furniture and the CAD system, like 1 through 3, I would like to vote on today, so that we can get that ordered. Just for reference, in the back, I put a little chart together as far as, just a general idea of when our go-live is. It's optimistic to do the furniture upgrade at the same time we do the radio installs, because dispatch is going to be displaced. And again, displacing dispatch is a lot. So I would like to only do it once, and it will be more cost-effective to do it all at the same time. So if we can vote on 1 through 3, that would be great.
Okay, perfect. Well, you know, my only concern, that's fine, I don't have a problem. I've got a question for Daniel, but the, you know, the concern, the ARPA money keeps being thrown around, and my concern, and why we want Grant Works helping us, or somebody like Grant Works, we've already started the project, so we're in the middle of the project. Can we get reimbursed for what we've already done? Can we, in the middle of it, go forward with ARPA funds and, when we're mixing, kind of commingling our funds versus their funds? So I want to make sure we're not, you know, stepping out of our lane and that we got our bases covered, so that'd be the only reason. So Daniel, the question is, if we make a motion to approve those three, can we say that we approve it with ARPA funds if available, or if not, go to capital improvement funds to pay for it, or let make that motion null?
You can't say it exactly like that. You need to identify the fund that it's going to come from, and then put, at the end of that, say if we come to the understanding that ARPA funds can legally be used to repay that, that it will switch to that new account. There's a complicated reason why, that, Bree, you can't vote on spending money that's not part of currently available revenues, and we don't know right now if that's currently available for this specific...
So just do it reverse what I said. We'll pay for it out of capital improvements, unless we can get ARPA funding, then we'll pay for it out of that.
Yes, that's right.
My question is this, won't we find, or can we find out in reference to this after we have the other grant come in, we can come back to this and say which?
Not today, Phillip. They're not here prepared to tell us their fee schedules or anything. They're here to make just a presentation of what they can do.
Okay, I'll go with the capital improvement versus the restricted or unrestricted ARPA funds, again.
Judge, my understanding is we have about $4 million in unrestricted ARPA funds. That's just based on the math of how much we've paid out of restricted funds to the charities, and kind of reverse-engineering it there, so...
We got about the same amount of money in both of them, I think. But my concern is, is because we're in the middle of the project. So I have the same concern, whichever part of the ARPA money, I'm just trying to be safe. Belting suspenders, let's don't mess it up. If we continue on and we can do it, that's great, I'm all for it. I just, I just don't want to get in the middle of it and find out because we've already started that we have a problem. So it's just a safe way to cover, it's all I'm trying to do. Either way, it gets done.
Sure. I'm happy to pay it out of capital improvement or ARPA, I just thought it needs to be mentioned that we have, we do have...
Yeah, we got the funds. I'm not worried about the funds, I'm just worried about making sure we're all in the lines, because we don't want to be held liable by the Treasury later and say we spent it incorrectly and reimburse it.
Well, if we have unrestricted, and this is just a, for instance, if we have unrestricted funds, then they're not restricted, we can use them for anything we want, whether it be paying for items 1 through 3, or designating, designating $1.7 to $2 million for radios, just to make sure that we're getting some money set aside for that, and then put together our committees and see if that number's going to be adequate. But if it's truly unrestricted, then we can do what we want today.
I'm like, I understand, and we're doing the same thing, it's just leaving us a little wiggle room in case we decide that the ARPA funds won't be appropriate for it, then either way, we're paying for it. It's being approved and being paid for, just we decide which pocket is coming out at a later date.
I'm good with that. I just think, a lot of the citizens who have concerns about this just want some assurance from the court that this, this project, the radios included, and not just the dispatch, and by the way, thank you, Virginia and Buddy, for all your hard work on that, this is a great presentation, but not just the dispatch, but the radios are a high priority to fund, whether it be from ARPA or the budget, or wherever we determine. But I think the concern is just that, as time goes on, yes, we have until we accept the radio to get the 45% discount, but these ARPA funds have to be designated by the end of this year, and there's a lot of competing priorities from, for the county's resources. So I don't, I'm not trying to be nitpicky, I think, but we have, we have people from the, in the public, from the public here today, and they're just, they're just trying to understand the level of commitment from this court to making sure this happens.
Well, I think we've already said, we, you know, I've said it earlier, and we've said it before, we know we're going to have to support them, we intend to support them, we're going to support them. We don't know what that looks like today, we don't know how, if we're buying 10 radios or 200 radios. As Virginia recommended to create a committee, I think that's an excellent idea. I think we approve it today. Let's get our dispatch equipment bought, let's get the items 1 through 3, let's get those ordered so they can come on in, get a committee set up to start working on the radios, and we'll fund the radios when we have a number. I don't think we should be funding and voting on an amount of money that we don't know that somebody's pulling out of the sky, because we don't, we need to have those meetings. I agree with her. Once it's done, we'll come back in here, and then we'll know what we're voting for and which pocket it'll come out of. But for now, we can order the dispatch and the furniture, and whatever the other items were, in 1 through 3, and then we'll get those on order, and we'll continue on working on getting the radios done. I don't think anybody on the court's saying they don't want to buy the radios for...
Nobody's said that.
Nobody's saying we're not for it, I mean, we're just...
We've used firemen to help put this program or this presentation together that Virginia just did. Nobody has said we don't support them, and we're not putting them on. But it's more complex than just putting them on, kind of like I was saying earlier, with AMR, what's going to happen to them. There's more studies and more information that's got to go into this, but nobody has said that we don't support them and we're not putting them on.
Does that answer y'all's question out there?
Action speaks louder than words. We're all accountable to what's concerned, so it sounds, it sounds good, but no one's saying that...
Come to, you need to come to, I'm sorry, it's a public meeting, we need to state your name and then make your comments on the mic.
Aaron Deary, from Wolf City. I'll take credit for being part of the Facebook post that has gotten so much whirlwind going. And it's not something that we, as a department, wanted to do. I mean, we never want to call anybody out, to try to make anybody look bad. It's just, we feel like it's come to the point, and at the time, it's way past time, as a matter of fact, to, where there's something to be done. We, we feel like we've kind of been left out, as my comrade was talking about earlier, you know, we were promised some equipment back several years ago, which he named off a couple of items that some of you may not be aware of what it is. One of those was a mechanical CPR compression device, which, they're expensive. Wolf City, we have one, and we have a second one on order. And it's because we, we work hard at managing our money and we're able to come up with those funds to do that. And we're talking $15,000 to $20,000 for one machine. We also just received a federal grant to buy the new air packs, the SEBA's is what he mentioned, and those things are at least $10,000 apiece. We were fortunate enough to receive a grant, we were able to purchase 24 air packs for Wolf City Fire Department. So we are working, as departments out there as a whole, to, on our, doing our part to So we are working as departments out there as a whole to, on our, doing our part to, to get grants, to get equipment. We saw some of the comments in the Facebook post of, you know, the fire departments could, could work on getting grants. Well, we are working on getting grants to buy the much-needed other equipment that we need. If we, if we're having to, to use up our chances on the grant side for getting radio equipment, then that, that makes us not be able to get the other equipment that we're badly needing as well. So we want to recognize that we do appreciate you guys and, and, you know, I've been a member of the, I've been a professional firefighter for 30 years. I've been on the Wolf City Fire Department for 28 years. I've seen where we've come a long ways in helping the county has in helping the fire departments.
I'm going to interrupt you for a second. You're telling me that you're the one that put out that, that the county was not giving you all any money?
That's where I'm, if you'll hang on just a minute, that's where I was. I apologize for that. That was never meant to, to be, come over that way.
It did.
And, and I, I recognize, and that's where I was going with that, was I was on the fire department for when we got $2,400 a month for, for 20-something years being on, on the fire department. And then, and then it was doubled to $4,800. And by all means, that's helped us tremendously. But, you know, just with, like everything else in the, in the world, the price of everything is absolutely insane. But we do appreciate what you've done for us and, and given us that money. And I, I want to personally apologize to, to you all if it, apparently it did come across that way, that, that the Commissioners' Court did not support the fire departments as a whole.
It did. Because I want to tell you something. I had people calling me and all of this, and I had to explain just what we did do.
Well, again, I apologize for that, and we'll, we'll correct that. We'll try to make that better and.
I want to tell you something. I've been on this court since 2001, and I've had support in this Commissioners' Court. Basically, yes, we have more money than we ever have, and we've knocked down taxes and all this. But I want to tell you this right here. I do not appreciate, you can apologize and all that, and basically, I'm sick and tired of Facebook people putting stuff out that is not true. And with the first of this right here, I prayed that everybody be honest with each other.
Well, I do too. I, I think we should all work together. We're all in it for the same, should be in it for the same goal as to, for the betterment of our community and our county.
Our goal is that way. Our goal as this Commissioners' Court is to do what's right for y'all.
Aaron, I appreciate everything you do for Wolf City and our community. I appreciate the humility you're just, you're, you're demonstrating here. I don't believe an apology is necessary. I think people such as yourself who respond to these calls with medical emergencies, who see the delays and see the potential impact on the public safety, health and safety, we should not be surprised if y'all feel a significant urgency to this decision. And that is what I've tried to, to say to this court today. If this court is committing to make the radios and their funding an utmost, foremost priority, then great, we can delay, delay decisions. My only point to this court and to Aaron is the funds are there. I fully support these committees in having this done, but we can absolutely today commit and even take a vote if we so choose to designate a certain amount of funding up to $4 million to make sure that this happens. I think that would be an assurance to the community and to the people who serve them in their times of most dire need.
Yes, sir. I couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate every one of y'all. I mean, you know, I've said it many a time, we can't, we, we can't live without y'all. We, we have to have y'all, and I think we've always tried to support you everywhere we can. The comments of the.
Saying on our, on our whiteboard at the station, you know, volunteers don't necessarily have the time to volunteer, they just have the heart.
That's, I agree with that.
And we're fortunate to have so many willing people, men and women, that volunteer their time to, to do and help, you know? It could cost the county a heck of a lot more than it's costing right now if, if we weren't for the volunteers.
And it's getting harder and harder to get them.
Yes.
I know.
I agree with that 100%.
We're, we're aware of it.
Lots of people that like to wear the T-shirt, but they don't really want to come and, and do the work. So, and, and by working, I mean, not only making the calls, but I'm also the administrative type stuff, the, working on the grants and trying to make betterment for the, the department and the community that we serve.
Y'all, y'all stated that we voted back in 2020, I think. That was not ARPA funds, that was COVID funds.
It was COVID.
And I think we, it was the time when we couldn't pay for that out of it.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you this. We used some of the COVID's funds from Wolf City, that Wolf City received to, to buy that Lucas device, the CPR machine.
We need to look back and see, I don't remember. That's been four years ago almost, so I don't remember us, I remember us talking about it a lot, but for some reason, I think we couldn't use the money for that, and, and that's why that didn't happen, I believe, but we'll get back on, back to you on it.
Thank y'all.
We're back, we'll research it. I don't, I don't know the answer today. I don't, it's not the way I remember it.
Me neither.
All right. So Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I think those items that we need to do now, I think they should be voted on.
Okay. So you're making a motion to approve items 1 through 3 on the proposal and fund them out of the capital improvement unless we can use, we find out we can use ARPA funds for those?
That'd be good.
Is that correct?
We do require a second voting for it.
A second vote, okay. All right.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion? Any discussion?
Daniel, someone wants to make a motion to designate 2 million out of ARPA. Would that need to be a separate vote?
No, it would need to be a separate vote from the starting motion and second.
Okay. We can amend it. Okay, sure.
All right, we got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion that we designate 2 million out of ARPA funds unrestricted to be set aside to support the decision of these committees we are contemplating putting together for purpose of purchasing radios for our volunteer fire departments.
Excuse me. Does he need to say if available also in reference to that?
No, not really for that.
My, my motion simply designates that the funds be reserved for that purpose if we need to come back at a later time and adjust the specific amount we can. It simply would reserve them and designate them for that purpose.
All right.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
We hadn't lifted, can he use, we already decided he could not use ARPA funds. Am I correct?
No.
We don't know.
No.
Two sets of ARPA funds.
Yes, restricted.
Restricted and one's unrestricted.
Yes.
The motion that was made for the initial approval of the 1 through 3 didn't designate, or didn't specifically delineate between those two because we don't know yet until we get competent advice on whether or not either one of those sets of money can be used for that. One of them almost certainly can be, the other one is questionable. And so the way that that was left open in the motion leaves that open, and that's going to require if we figure out that one of those sets of monies is an appropriate use for that, then we're going to have to come back to court because of U.S. Treasury grant obligations, grant assurances that we made that say that we have to keep the appropriate paperwork to justify the spending of all of that money. But the way that Mark's motion was, it, it wasn't subject to, or he didn't say, you know, either one of those specifically. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
No, he said specifically the unrestricted.
Specifically, I thought ARPA. Am I correct?
He did.
He did.
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, I missed that part. He said, if he said specifically, but is that what you're asking?
Well, hell, talk to find out what you said because we already decided that we'd have to check to find out if ARPA could do it, even on the last one. Am I correct?
Yeah, we're, definitely. Because the way that the last motion worked, what y'all approved, was a separate, completely separate from ARPA account.
I agree.
It will switch over if you come back to court after getting that advice and take a separate secondary action.
Okay, so basically, here's what it should have been, is basically set aside whatever amount it was, but should not have used ARPA. Am I correct? Because we don't know yet.
Well, setting it aside in the eyes of the Treasury, you know, setting it aside is different from.
Encumbered, yes.
The spending is the trigger that requires us to show through paperwork that it was an appropriate use of that specific bucket of money.
Let's move on. Let's, let's go to Act 9, Presentation Discussion for Retaining Services of Grant Works to Assist the County in Grants and ARPA Funding. Sorry to put y'all in such a hot seat through all that, but we, we need help, as you can tell. Name, name, please.
Caitlin Verrett, Grant Works, Project Manager.
Okay.
I have a presentation for y'all.
Yes.
I am Tracy Graham, a Project Manager as well with Grant Works.
Thank y'all for being here. I need to send, I need to hit, send content.
Yeah, we'll just scroll through it like this. All right, as we already said, I'm Caitlin, this is Tracy. We both are Project Managers at Grant Works, and our contact information is in this PowerPoint slide for y'all. Y'all can keep a copy of this if y'all so wish. I can send this to y'all later also.
Okay.
But as of the last report that is publicly available to us, that everybody in the United States, oops, I'm sorry, y'all have a total obligation of $19,150,729. As of the report from October, there was another report in January, again, not available, y'all have obligated $3.2 million of that with 16 projects, and y'all have declared that y'all are claiming the standard allowance of revenue loss of $10 million. With this information, this means y'all have about 15.8 remaining to obligate. I want to make a note to y'all that obligations don't simply mean declaring that y'all are going to spend the funds in court. This means that you actually have to put it under contract or purchase order. So that might change how quickly y'all need to obligate these funds by the end of the year. As y'all know, the obligation deadline is December 31st, 2024. So with that in mind, and with, with all the information we have publicly available, we kind of need, whoever comes in to assist y'all, Grant Works, another firm, is going to have to come in, hit in the ground running to make sure y'all have all of this done, you know, as soon as possible by the end of the year. So you go into project development, your procurement, your project implementation, your project monitoring, and your completion. The project development, whoever comes in, Grant Works or someone else, they're going to have to review what y'all have already done, make sure it's categorized correctly. What type of paperwork do y'all have? Did y'all do the procurement correctly, which I'm sure y'all have, but, you know, to ARPA standards, it may differ depending on if it's a 6.1 project or not. So those things, you know, it's going to be very intensive and deep diving into the paperwork y'all have already done, you know? And then you go into the procurement. Once y'all decide those projects that y'all want to spend the rest of the funds on, you go into the procurement process. The procurement process can take anywhere from one month, or we've had some projects that's taken three, four, or five months because we've had to rebid it multiple times because we simply received no bids or the bids were too high. It was not something the community wanted to spend that much money on. So we had to go back, change it, you know, and continue the process again. Then we go into project implementation. We would, you know, get labor rates for your construction projects, have those pre-construction meetings with your, if there's an engineer or the construction firms. We'll do labor monitoring for projects that, you know, have that labor requirement. And then you go into completion. We'll make the quarterly reports with you and assist you in those quarterly reports, making sure, you know, we are spending those funds, we're obligating those funds correctly. With that procurement process, you know, we assist you along the way. We have templates available to assist you with that independent cost estimate. Those small equipment purchases, those RFPs, those RFQs, we have those templates already available to assist you in getting these projects ready to go as soon as possible. The RFQ packets, if it's an engineer, we have a department specifically available to y'all and assist y'all throughout this entire process. For the RFP packet, we handle that for y'all. The small purchases, that's something y'all are familiar with. We assist y'all in making sure that the paperwork that y'all already have in place is, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm sorry.
Basically, that it meets compliance or the guidelines for ARPA.
Thank you.
Because that's what we have to go back, because again, whatever you spend money on, we have to make sure it's in compliance with those CFR 200, with you're spending the money correctly, so you really have to take a good look. So we're going to feel like we're just paper wrappers if we're the person of whomever you need because we want to, you know, that's the only way we can make healthy to make a good decision on what's been done.
Thank you, Tracy. And then we'll go through until the notification of award. We'll do the contract templates, negotiations if there's an engineer involved, all the way into, you know, you getting the services, all the way through the process of procurement. Now, again, we mentioned the timelines. Here is a general timeline for every step of the process for projects. So project selection, a month generally, once you know if it's us or somebody else, really intensively, it's going to take about a month. Engineering and construction procurement, again, anywhere from a month to three to four months. And it goes all the way through until closeout and completion where we expect closeout to be at 18 months. And again, this is just approximations. This is what we estimate for all ARPA projects, all the communities that we work with. And that is all the information I had for y'all. Did y'all have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? Mary?
We are starting to work on grants.
Put your mic, is your mic on?
All right, can you hear me now? All right, sorry about that. They don't usually let me talk. We are starting to work on grants and realize the importance of everything you've just mentioned here in every step. We do it wrong, they come in, they demand the money back. So we truly understand the dilemma that we're in right now, and I think it's still always very wise in soliciting somebody that could help us. I think once we get good guidance, we'll be able to handle a lot more endeavors. But I do believe that what you just presented is exactly the proposal process that we would match and make sure we're documented and get the government every document they require in order to bless our buying.
Anybody else got anything? So I had a conversation yesterday with y'all, not y'all particularly, but Mr. Edwards, I think Charles Edwards, and he said that y'all would need to come back with, you know, or we needed to talk about cost, what the fees were going to be, how, and that could be done at a different meeting.
Unfortunately, they have not given me the privilege of doing that sort of a session.
And that's fine.
So yes, that would have to be done outside. You know, y'all would have to go through the full RFP process and, you know, let other vendors, other grant service administrators also bid in this process. So I would not say to just hire us directly. That is a huge red flag probably when you go to. go to-
Right, yeah, my name is Rob Arthur, I'm a region, North Central Texas, client services manager, sorry. Yeah, we'd have to go through the two CFR 200 proposal bid process to be hired as the administrator for this, since it's over that dollar amount.
Right. Okay.
Could you do this, please? Could you get a copy of your presentation to us?
Yes.
I don't have a copy of it. Thank you. Each one of us, please. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, action item five, county attorney's office request transferring out of 621-1391-01, remaining fiscal year '24, budgeted $3,116.49 stipend from Wiley Hallow Peter to Katie Jones plus $588 in benefits and $3,791.97 stipend from Allison Ashley plus $715 in benefits to Janice Evans out of the pretrial intervention program. The PIP for Hunt County Attorney's Office stipends to be reimbursed by fees collected under Article 102.0121 of the Code of Criminal Procedures. In addition, Hunt County Attorney's Office requests $6,608.49 stipend increase plus $1,247 in benefits for Katie Jones and $6,321.97 stipend increase plus $1,192 in benefits for Janice Evans out of the pretrial intervention program for the Hunt County's Attorney's Office paid out of fiscal year '24, PIP contingency, 621-137600. Calvin?
Judge, good morning, commissioners. Judge Stovall, I'm here today kind of making a fairness argument for my two employees that are left out of a Senate Bill 22 that was passed last year by the legislature. The bottom line up front, this doesn't cost Hunt County taxpayers a dime. It comes out of a pretrial intervention fund that's completely funded by my misdemeanor defendants. There's auditors' offices here, they can provide you the line item amount, but there's over $122,000 in that account. My proposal basically covers the two employees that aren't covered under the definition under Senate Bill 22 that would make them eligible beneficiaries. But they're already participating in this pretrial intervention program because they do the paperwork and review the applications and have been for the last two and a half years. So I found this as a equitable and fair way to get them almost the exact same money that they were going to get under the SB 22 grant money. My proposal would basically take two employees that are already on the pretrial intervention program, Wiley Hollow Peter and Ashley Paige, thank you, I'm forgetting her last name, off of that program and putting her and Wiley onto the SB 22 because they are eligible to collect under the SB 22 grant money. That money has come in, by the way, I applied for that grant back in January when they finally had the application made online. So thanks to the legislature, rural prosecutors based in our population get to give additional salary supplements, all 254 counties get to apply and get the money. But they did not choose to say paralegals or secretaries as part of that program, and I found that kind of offensive because they're just as important to my team as my attorneys and my victim assistance coordinator and my two investigators. So those two, these two ladies have been in the office for more than eight years, one's been there for 22 years. I felt like I didn't want them to be left off, so I'm making the request to have the commissioners approve this action item where they get the money through this alternative fund, which is not provided by Hunt County taxpayers. I even put a proposal in there that says that their fringe benefit costs, which would be the FICA, the unemployment, the workers' comp, we could fund that through this program too. Presently, the employees that are getting funded through Account 77, that pretrial intervention, they do get their fringe benefit costs picked up by the county, just the salary stipend is picked up out of the fund. But my proposal actually says we just covered the whole thing out of the pretrial intervention fund, just to make it a non-issue for the commissioners.
Well, this came a problem because of the, we were originally told that anybody that was trained in the victim's assistant program would be eligible for it, and then they came back and said just one person was eligible for it.
Thank you, Judge. Yes, so they gave us very little guidance. It's a brand-new bill that got passed to tell all the prosecutors to apply for this with given little guidance. So what we got guidance from our association was if we trained our staff into becoming victim assistance coordinators, they too could have those responsibilities and get some of the SB 22 money. And then two weeks ago, the comptroller's office down in Austin issued a very contrary opinion saying that is not the case. Rural prosecutor offices can only have one victim assistance coordinator per office.
Paid for by that program.
Paid, I'm sorry, paid through, through the SB 22 money, correct. So that's, that's the issue that why I'm here on the edge.
Right, okay. I just wanted to hope everybody understands what's going on. All right, commissioner, you got any questions?
Calvin, this stipend would, is contingent upon SB 22 stipends remaining in place.
Yes.
It would go away.
Yeah, fair, good question, Commissioner Hutchins. I think what he's asking is that I'm only taking care of these two employees because SB 22 money is available to take care of all my other employees. And if the SB 22 grant money was not, and by the way, it has been funded for two years, so there's also a fiscal year '25 authorization for that. But if it stopped getting funded, my proposal was intent, the intent behind this was only take care of the two on the PIP based upon the SB 22 being available for the other employees, yes.
But we're doing all the stipends, because if the money stops, then the, from the state, then those stipends stop also, and all your employees are aware of that.
Yes, Judge, so they know that for many reasons why they can't rely on the pretrial stipend as a, as a county obligation. The county's not agreed to do that when the money goes away. I do, I will say, I don't know if there's a mechanism, I think the commissioners would have to bring this up in the future if the SB 22 went away, to stop the funding for the pretrial intervention for those employees that are, that are getting that stipend. I don't think there's a mechanism in place for just to automatically stop because SB 22 goes away in five years. So y'all have to figure that out at that point, I would guess.
Okay. Any questions? Entertained motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item six, the district attorney's office requests an increase in budgeting authority to provide for expenditure of $15,636 of pretrial intervention funds in the form of stipend for Gertrude Winiger plus $2,900 in benefits, the stipend to be reimbursed out of fees collected under Article 102.0121 of the Code of Criminal Procedures. The district attorney's office requests funds in the state supplement DA staff line item for the current budget year be really allocated to the following employees in the following amounts. Shelley Hughes, $4,750. Claudia Argu, how do you say her last name?
Argu Manis.
Argu Manis, $3,500. Cassidy Teal, $3,000. No, be-
Good morning, Judge.
Commissioners, we're, we're situated in a similar way to Calvin, some of the, what he had mentioned to you before. I think a whole lot of you are very familiar with the Senate Bill 22. And before I say anything else, I want to thank Mary and Stacy and Brittany just for them assisting us through this process, particularly with this money coming in and figuring out where we're going to go with it. But where I'm a little bit different than Calvin is that we have never set up for any budgetary authority to pay any, what we call PIP money, and I think y'all may call it PTI? Or what's the-
Pretrial intervention.
Okay, pretrial intervention, but if I say PIP, it's the same thing. And so I am asking that we be authorized, the budgetary authority, in the amount read there, the 15,636 for Trudy Winiger. The way this came about was Trudy, we thought, as a victim's assistance coordinator, would be entitled to those grant funds as well, which she was ultimately, and we disagree with that, but that's what, the way it is, and that's what we're dealing under. And so that being the case, thought that it would be a good time to go ahead and establish our PIP account to pay Trudy to do the pretrial intervention program. That's that. Then the second part is, we receive from the state, a state salary supplement of $22,500 per year. I don't remember when it switched to 22,500, but there was a time where it was 36, as I remember, or 34. It was, it was a larger amount, but this is what we get now. And right now, we have that allocated to different employees in the office. But these individuals that you just read off, Judge, Shelley Hughes, Claudia, and Cassidy, they're not entitled to any of the PIP funds or the Senate Bill 22 funds. So we're asking to be able to reallocate that, those state supplement funds to those three employees.
So who's currently getting those funds?
I believe Steve Lilly gets some, Trudy gets some.
Are they being taken away, or you got that way?
No, they're being taken away, since they're eligible for Senate Bill 22 funds.
Okay.
And/or in Trudy's case.
The amount we're going to give to these other people will be taken away from somewhere else.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's no cost to the, to the county on this.
Okay.
We're shuffling around funds that we already had.
They took one away, but this is another way to reimburse it, correct?
I'm sorry?
They took that away due to the law, but they, this, this enables us to use this other fund for that. Am I correct?
They didn't take it away, I mean, it's still there, but we, I'm taking it away, since they're eligible for this grant money.
Yes.
And those other funds free those up.
Yes.
And like I said, there's no, no cost to the county, we're just shuffling grant money.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Entertained motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Before y'all leave, I think each of y'all have a new hire with salaries, are those coming out of these grants?
Judge, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. As part of the SB 22, it's not really on this, but it is part of the whole thing. As part of the SB 22, we, we did hire a new employee that's going to be so victim's assistance coordinator.
So that's the one you're requesting today, Calvin?
No, no-
It's going to be just the normal payroll.
This is not, yours is normal payroll?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And Judge, just so I'm clear, the, the new employee, that's coming out of Senate Bill 22 money?
Maria, it's going to be Senate Bill 22?
Yes.
You are, y'all already understand, okay. All right, I just want to make sure we were straight on where the money was coming from.
Yes, sir.
Okay, commissioners, I'll go back and entertain a motion to approve payroll and personnel with the, with the discussion we just had, that the DA's money will be paid out of Senate Bill 22 and the county attorneys is just a new hire.
Daniel, does that work, my language?
Yeah.
Great. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, thank both of you. Action item seven, public hearing and order on public safety purchasing approval by court of purchasing act exemption pursuant to section 262 Texas Local Government Code for repair order from TK Elevator Corporation for elevator repairs according to quote number 2024-2-1674122, referenced ID ACIA 273GDJ7 at the Hunt County Justice Center. Order total amount $61,581.19 per source well contract number 080420-TKE. 50% payment of $30,790.6 will be due and payable as the initial progress payment within 10 days from TK Elevators receipt a fully executed work order. The remaining 50% of $30,790.60 is due upon completion of work order. Funding from building, repairing, and maintenance at the jail. Daniel, you want to brief us?
Yeah, what I passed out to you earlier today, the two-page order, it's really just a one page, and there's only a few relevant words on there to what we're doing. This is similar to the order that was done over the past couple of meetings related to the radio project. This relates to the repair of an elevator that's in the jail that's broken. That elevator is the one that they use to take handicapped individuals up from the bottom floor to the top floor. And as it stands right now, without that elevator in working order, that creates a problem for access and basically the appropriate administration of jail operations because in order to take people up, you can't go upstairs, they have to leave the jail, go outside and around on the ramps. There are repairs, we know what needs to be repaired. This that you have in front of you, or that's on the agenda, is basically a contract that we can approve with the TK Elevator Corporation for the repair costs and the parts cost to repair those. If you approve this order, basically the impact of that is that you are making a decision based on an immediate or emergency need that relates to health and safety issues and avoiding going out for a full bid for that, which is generally required because it's an amount over $50,000. And so if you approve this order after having a public hearing, then what you're doing is finding in court that the exception applies because this is a, a health and safety issue, basically, but not necessarily health as much as it is safety. But this, the issue can be repaired under this order if you do it that way, or you can decide not to do that and go out for an RFP, which will add at least two or three months to the process.
So approving the order allows maintenance to order, sign the order, work order, or we need to approve the work order also?
Doing this allows the work order to be signed, but the motion would be to approve the order and approve maintenance's signatures on those, on that contract.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, got any questions? All right, entertain a motion for approval of the work order and giving permission to maintenance to sign the work order.
So moved.
Second.
Wait, were you-
Oh, we got to a public hearing. Yeah, at this time, we'll open it up to a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak for against this, please step forward, or anybody on the line?
No, there's not.
Being no one's stepping forward or on the line, I'll close the public testimony. Commissioner, we had a motion, do we need to redo the motion?
Definitely.
All right, so we got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item eight, the adoption of budget calendar for fiscal year '24, '25 process. Commissioners, you got a copy of, got any questions?
Yes, July the 20th, 7th, it's the wrong date from my understanding, but I don't know what the date is supposed to be. I believe that was said to be a Saturday. Public hearing for district judges set salary. We need to correct that.
All right, hang on.
Jessica, do you know anything about it?
What is that?
I was told that the public hearing for district judges is set salaries for auditor's office and court reporters on the 27th, that that was a Saturday. Do we need to change that or not?
Oh, probable.
Yep, it needs to be the 26th.
Is it July 27?
Yes, it's, it needs to be revised to July 26.
July the 26th?
Yes. Thank you, Philip. Pleasure to talk to you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll have votes on the 26th?
Yeah, both of those are deadlines, yeah. Well, of course, the, no, it's fine. You got any other questions?
No, sir.
All right, entertain a motion for approval.
Yeah, real quick. I see June 24th through 28th is dates to be scheduled for budget workshops. We don't have to hold up approving this, this calendar to do that, but I'd like to see us go ahead and schedule those, those workshops sooner rather than later so that commissioners can hear from department heads if there's any significant requests or changes to their budget before it's all put together.
Okay, I'm, I can accommodate that. We can do it as we need, we don't, this is a suggestion, as always is being.
Understood.
Just keep us on schedule so we can get it, the budget's approved and tax rate's set in the appropriate times.
Your honor, I make a motion, we allow this and accept this with the change of July the 27th to July the 26th. That's a motion.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item nine, oh, we already done that one, sorry. Action number 10, the request for permission to do work within county right-of-way along County Road 1079, 750 foot east of intersection of County Road 1079 and County Road 1073. 208, County Road 1079, Greenville, Texas. We're looking to install a single-phase overhead distribution line 45 feet across County Road 1079 from an existing pole and install a pole approximately one foot inside the north right-of-way line of County Road 1079 precinct 1 under normal stipulations from, that's a request from our own court.
Judge, make a motion, we approve this?
Second.
Got a motion- Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item 11, request for permission to do work within the county right of way along county road 2134, we're looking to install single-phase overhead distribution line five foot inside the east right-of-way line of 2510, county road 2134, cattle mills in precinct two, under normal stipulations, again, on court.
Make a motion, we approve this construction under normal.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action number 12, request for permission to do work within the county right of way at 1057 county road 4518, Wolf City, 75496, we're looking to install single-phase overhead distribution approximately five foot inside the east right-of-way line of county road 4518 and precinct four, under normal stipulations, again, on court.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action number 13, consider and possibly adopt a road damage prepayment agreement between Hunt County and Garner Construction for the purpose of making repairs to all or parts of a certain site impacted and damaged by construction of the Lake Ralph Hall pipeline through a portion of Hunt County precinct one, two, county road 1025, 1026, 1042, 1043, 1087, 1089, 1098, 1101, 1106, 1107, 1108, 1125 and 1132.
Judge, this is, we call it prepayment, but at this point it's really just repayment. This is an agreement, we're asking the court to approve for this company garnering construction to reimburse the county and in exchange for damage to the roads done during the construction of the pipeline, in exchange, we are indemnifying them from any further liability for reconstruction or repairs to those, to those roads. The project is mostly done at this point, and after talking with our attorney and confirming this with the construction company, this would not prohibit county from seeking further damages if, if some other road was accessed to a different phase of the, of the pipeline construction, although that is not particularly likely at this point due to the phase and construction, construction that they're at.
Okay.
That's really it, I'm happy to answer questions.
Entertaining motion for approval?
Question, are you using the FEMA rights?
This is a, these are material only, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 14, letter approval for American National Bank to serve as escrow agent for administration of Texas Water Development Board grant. Daniel, you, just need to take a minute in executive session, okay. Action item 15, upgrade of approximately 2,955 feet of county road 1101 from rock to oil sand in precinct one, money is in escrow.
Judge, I make the motion, we approve this upgrade with the, with the correction that it is a dirt-to-rock upgrade.
Okay.
My bad, Jessica, I'm sorry.
All right. Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item 16, the civil plans for Sunset Estates, Phase Two in precinct two, Ryan, you want to update us?
All right, these are civil plans for a new subdivision over in precinct two, there's a letter from the engineers stating that they meet all of our engineering requirements.
Commissioners, you got any questions? Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 17, replant of lot one of FM 1566, 56, 66 Estates in precinct four, map won't work.
Uh, this is, this is actually a pretty simple deal, the, the folks are having to divide their property, I believe it's more for a mortgage type situation, but the mortgage company is requiring that they have a smaller lot, but it is a recorded subdivision and they said they're, they're having to go through and do the replat so that they can, they can have this lot separated from the other one. And it's replat, so.
Right, we got a public hearing. Any questions before we open it up to public? All right, at this time I'll open that up for public comments on the replant of lot one of FM 1566 Estates in precinct four. Anybody wish to speak for or against? Anybody online, just being no comments, we'll close the public comments. Commissioners, entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action number 18, the final plant for Jesse Floyd addition in precinct one.
Pretty simple, one-lot subdivision, meets all furniture requirements, it's on a FM road up there, just outside of Kingston.
Any comments? Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action number 19, the final plant for Chavez addition in precinct three.
Another pretty simple, single-lot subdivision, these, these poor folks actually bought this property not knowing that they needed to plat it, now they're coming back and having to plat it instead of the original seller plating it before he sold. Love that, let's get that cart right before the horse.
All right, any questions? Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 20, the final plant of Mallard Point, Phase Two, Section One, Lot 17 and 18, Block C in precinct three. What a name.
This one we had actually talked about several months back, you know, Mallard Point's doing a pretty good-sized project right now, and they are very closely approaching completion of their road and their infrastructure, all their construction. These are two lots that are, that are down on the end, kind of away from the rest of the, the other one that's in a different section. So they're wanting to go ahead and, and get this one approved, I think they're going to do some spec homes, homes on these two lots to, to show the public for, for sales purposes.
May I ask you this, in reference to this, they've gone on and done a study in reference to where the water's going, correct?
These, these lots were looked at whenever they, whenever they had the civil plans and, and all the plans had been done for the subdivision, so they, they were, they were a part of that. There again, it's kind of a, it's, it's kind of away from it, it's in a different section than the, the rest of the construction, so that's why it's, it's being done separately.
But our engineer has okayed this, correct?
Yes.
You know, thank you.
Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Is there anything else before the court, before we go into executive session? I'll entertain a motion going to executive session under items one through four. Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries, we're going to executive session at 11:59.
Let me know when we're up.
You want me to just make the motions or you want to say something about it?
We're live, Judge.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just give a quick introductory. There's a property just on the southern edge of the city limit.
Okay, hang on, let me get to meeting. All right, it's 1:07, we're out of executive session, in regular session. Daniel, you want to brief us?
Yeah, there was an item discussed in executive session related to an address at 415 Bethel Road or adjacent to that. There's a person who dammed up that drainage ditch through there and is backing up the water to the county's infrastructure and risks damage of that infrastructure as a health and safety issue. I'm asking the court for authority to file a nuisance lawsuit to get that removed as quickly as possible so that water can continue to flow down that drainage ditch.
Any questions? I'll make a motion that we authorize the court's civil attorney's office to file and prosecute a public nuisance lawsuit against the owner of property, tax ID number 37396, and the person responsible for the damming of the drainage ditch own or near that property.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries.
All right, and then if we go back to item number 14, the letter approval for American National Bank to serve as escrow agent. The county has a grant from the Texas Water Development Board. The agency is requiring the county to appoint a bank to serve as the escrow agent for payments of monies that have already been, in at least some part, already been earned. The bank is asking for the letter that you've got in front of you to ensure that they're not going to be responsible for any unknown liability that comes from actions of people outside the bank. I drafted the letter and included the language that is in that letter to ensure that it is legal under the Texas Constitution and the other codes that are mentioned. It would also be appropriate for you to give authority to the county judge to make any nonmaterial changes to the extent that they're requested by the bank.
All right, any questions? I'll make the motion that the court approved the escrow protection letter to American National Bank and authorize the county judge to make any necessary nonmaterial changes to the letter.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? All opposed, motion carries.
Hey, question please.
Yep.
Can he make the motion and him be involved in?
Yeah, that's fine.
Good, thank you.
All right, the other thing is a new employee for the purchasing department, and I'll make a motion that we create a new position in the purchasing department and with a salary not to exceed $55,000 a year. Make that as a motion.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Anything else before the court today?
No.
Being none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Show move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. We adjourned at 1:10. Thank you.